Good evening, welcome to the March 22nd, 2016 meeting of the Middle School Committee. I will start, this meeting is being recorded and can be viewed on Mondays at 7:00 PM on Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 37. I'll start now with the roll call vote, or the roll call attendance, Mark Conroy here. Nancy?
Here.
Mr. Calorino, Mr. Dory, you aren't here yet, and Jack?
Here.
I know we do have people sign in for open session. What I'm going to do is we will start first with a presentation by Mr. Mike Feeny, the Director from Department of Public Health. And once the presentation is given, he will be willing to take questions from the public. So we will start with that on the screen behind us, so we're gonna slide over out of the way.
Hi folks, my name is Mike Feeny, I'm with the Department of Public Health and the Director of the Indoor Air Quality Program. And my staff and I ended up having a look at your building at the Clark Brown. With me is Corey Holmes, who's one of the indoor inspectors that we have. Just to give you some background as to what we're gonna talk about is, we're gonna talk a little bit about background about indoor air quality, we're gonna talk about water damage, because I know that people are concerned about issues of mold. We're also gonna talk about how we evaluated different things in the building such as the HVAC system, then we'll talk a little bit about respiratory irritants and odors, and then the recommendations that we made. We provided a report to the school department on the building, it is public record, will be available on our website hopefully very soon. But what I like to do is, once I get done, I'll then ask you if you have any questions. Just to give you a little idea, the program does this type of work all over New England. We do roughly about 100 buildings a year, and where we do this is any public building that you can think of, so whether it be schools, state office spaces, courthouses, fire stations, police, libraries, we have seen these, and we've, I probably have done close to 1,000 buildings in my career all across Massachusetts. So what we do is that we operate under this particular law, chapter 11 in Section 5. What we do is we advise the government concerning location and other sanitary conditions of public buildings. We advise, we don't regulate. So what we do is we go and evaluate a building, and we have the, we have the opportunity to go and look at the building, we're not gonna give a laundry list that say, here, comply with this, we're actually gonna go look at the building, do evaluations to try to figure out what are the issues there, and then make recommendations on how to fix it. And so when we look at these type of buildings, we look at three different things. We look at the ventilation system, we look at water damage, and then we look at point sources of respiratory irritants. Now a lot of times, these issues are tied to three different issues. It's either the design of the building, it's the capital maintenance of the building, or what I call building occupant-induced problems, or what people are doing inside the building. So that, for instance, this is an example of poor design. You don't wanna have fresh air intake for a classroom right over a garage, as it was in this particular building. This is not yours, by the way. This is in Western Mass. Then there's capital maintenance, okay, different things that have to be done in order to have the system work. Here we have, see how loose the fan belt is? That thing's gonna rattle, it's gonna slip, it's gonna be noisy. People are gonna tend to want to turn that system off because it's too noisy. You turn it off, this system no longer can provide fresh air. Or building occupant-induced problems, such as different chemicals that are used, such as cleaning products, or that, in this particular case, and you'll see in other slides, parts of the ventilation system are blocked off, so they can't function in order to do what they're supposed to be doing in the building. Now, a lot of times you'll have people talk about, or you hear the phrase "sick building" syndrome, well this was a description that was defined by the National Institute for Occupational Safety and Health. Basically what they said is that if you have an individual or group of individuals who believe that they have, have some sort of symptoms or symptoms either in part of the building or entire building, that you may have a problem, what's we call a sick building syndrome issue. The other thing is, is that they say that you have to have roughly more than 20% of the population should be expressing or having these type of symptoms. So I'm gonna ask, how many, how many people are in the Brown?
620.
620, okay. So you're looking at over 120 people having symptoms that would be reported of being in that building. Now one thing we also did look at is, the department actually does look at asthma rates. We collect this data from all over, all over Massachusetts and New School, and we check that against the statewide average, and as you can see, looking at the different enrollment data, we have data going from 2009 to 2014. The state average roughly is around 12%, if you round up. And looking at the Clyde Brown, you can see that the asthma rates are far, are less than the state average. So we're not seeing, so this would not be an indicator that we're having across the board problem within the building, but that doesn't mean the building does not have problems. Okay? And I think that we can stipulate that there's a problem with water damage, okay? Now I had a look at this building in 2009, this was, I believe, a slide that I found, that I made up as part of the 2009 report. What looks, does this slide look strange to you all? The roof is white. It was all rubber membrane at one point. So that roof was redone after 2009. So, in order to have issues with mold, you have to have four things. You have to have mold spores. Mold spores are in the environment, they're outdoors, right now I walked in with them all over me, they're all on shoes. You can't get rid of them out of the building. You have to have the mold spore get into some form of carbon, because that's what it eats. A mold spore behaves not that dissimilar to a plant. It has to get into the right place, into the right material, get the right temperature, and it grows above 45 degrees Fahrenheit. Then you have to have the right amount of water. Without water, you don't have mold. So that when we go and we look at a building, we do not do mold testing. What we do is we look to see what's wet, because what really, what mold is, is a subcategory of the issue of water damage. Water is getting to a place where it should not be, and getting into a place where it can support mold growth. So, either A, you have moisture being introduced into the building, such as through steam, where it's something that's not vented correctly, or water leak, and it gets into a place and it gets moist. So that, things that are unlikely to grow mold are things that are not porous, okay, things such as brick, cinder block, floor tile, glass, metal. Okay, if you see something that's on this table that looks like dirt and that's growing upwards, that is the debris on the table, it isn't the table itself. Okay, the more and more I do this work, the more I realize I've become my mother. We're talking about things, either we're throwing it out, or we're cleaning it. This is the type of thing that you would clean. The other thing that you don't clean, that you throw, are things that are porous, that contain carbon. So in this room, the carpeting, the ceiling tiles, the gypsum wallboard, the upholstery, cardboard, the books, the paper, anything, if it came from a plant, or if it's derived from petroleum, once it gets wet, it has the ability to grow mold. And so then, we look at this, it cannot be cleaned. If it gets into the matrix with this material, there's nothing you can do, the only thing you can do is to throw it out. So, we had an intervening factor in the last couple of years. Remember last February? How many people here had ice dams on your house? Raise your hands. Okay, the Clyde Brown was no different. Now was anybody's teacher here, was there? Did the building look like this on the outside?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
We have lots of them.
Yeah.
It's time you go to Hawaii.
Well, not this year, we didn't have ice dams, okay? But basically, your roof has different pieces to it. There's the sheathing underneath, they're supposed to be basically felt, and then you put the tiles on top of it. The problem is, is that roofs are not watertight. They shed water. So what can end up happening is, is that you're gonna, ice dam develop. And in order to prevent that, what you need to have is two pieces of equipment that's on the roof. There's something called a soffit vent, that's under the eave of the roof, where you see the arrows on the side. That allows for cold air to get up under the roof, air to travel across the roof and come out what's called a ridge vent at the top. The purpose of this is to make sure that the temperature of the roof is even across the board. Your building has soffit vents. I found them, they're there. I went to go have a look tonight, there's no ridge vents. I was in the, I actually got up into the attic space, and usually if you have a ridge vent, you should look up and you should see light coming through the ridge? Dark, nothing. The only light that was coming, coming up through the, was through the floor, through missing ceiling tiles. So, where does the heat go? It has no place to go, so it's gonna build up in the peak. Now I did ask about, see this vent on the left? Okay, that's right in the middle, right under the peak, that could be potential, what's called a gable vent. It serves the same purpose as a ridge vent, and I asked, is this, do we know, is this an exhaust vent, or is this a, is this a ridge vent? Do we know? Okay. I am betting it is not a gable vent, because I could not fair, quite figure out how the exhaust system gets out from the classrooms. So if that's an exhaust vent, then that's gonna be connected to ductwork. Now I could not get up into the ceiling, into the area of the roof of, in the wind, classrooms 1 through 11, but if that is not insulated, the heat that's coming from the ductwork will also gather in the roof and has no place to go. Because this is what happens with an ice dam. You have heat from the room, the heat that's emanating from any sort of ductwork that's not insulated, it gets up and gathers in the peak of the roof, which raises the temperature of the roof, the snow on it melts, it turns to water. As it travels down the peak of the roof, it then gets to a point where it freezes to form ice. And ironically, ice is water impermeable, so it forms a dam. So then the mo, the water that is not frozen, then gathers up behind the ice against the tile and the shingles, which is not watertight, and starts to leak into the building. That is what happened. And so if you have a heating duct, as you can see with the squid line, that can increase the temperature of any sort of hole that's in this insulation, because the floor of the attic should have insulation underneath it to prevent heat from the rooms from going up into the attic space. What we see here is that if that happens, you now have all these different waste elements that can then start to melt the snow. And once the snow melts, you then have an issue. So, if classrooms 5, 6, and 7, the edge of the roof looked like that, you had an ice dam, and I'm pretty sure that the rest of the roof had large icicles on the outside of them. I asked for pictures, if somebody took them, I haven't got any. So I was not there, I can't vouch for it, but just seeing what was in those spaces, this makes sense as to what happened. So I got up into the ceiling, and what I found was something odd. There were a couple of different things that they did to try to prevent heat from getting up into the attic. And I'll, I'll point, if I may. Here's the insulation that they put, and here's the lap that's holding it up. See these ceiling tiles right here? See how they're perfectly cut? They were placed on top of the light fixtures. I for the life of me have never seen this. The only thing that I can think of why that was done was to prevent heat from the lights to get up into the ceiling, because that's another heat source. It's the only reasonable explanation. Now, would I have done this? Absolutely not. I would have done the insulation right, unfortunately. And that's another close-up of it. This is what you found in the insulation, gaps like about this big. So now any heat that gets above the ceiling, and ceiling tiles are not airtight, air will go right through them. That now is up into the ceiling, is heating the peak, and then you see other spaces like this, where you can see the big open voids. If that is there, heat from the classrooms are getting up into the attic to cause ice dams. Now, something else that is very unusual about this particular wing, anything, anything looked funny in that picture? It's a narrow shot of the south side of the building. Because this is a unique feature. Okay, here you have one classroom, see how this is all straight? Over here, see how the roof shuts out? Okay? I don't have a reasonable explanation. If anybody here could tell me, why does the roof extend out like that? I would like it, because then it would give me logic. I don't have logic in this. Because this is what your roof looks like, there's, now roofs are supposed to look like this in houses, okay? They're basically shaped like this, okay? There's a peak, there's an edge, it's a complete slope down to the edge, right? Now if you're in New England and you're cheap, what you do is you put a flat roof in, so it's like this, right? Well, anything look, this is the extension out from rooms 5, 6, and 7, anything look a little bit strange there?
It's pretty thorough.
Here, I'll give you a close-up. Okay, your roof looks like this. Okay? Now, what will happen with this, is that with your peak, you might get snow coming off the roof, you might get lucky. Here, it doesn't come off. What will happen is that snow will gather at that joint, okay? So what happens is that as the snow presses on that joint where the arrows are, that will then pull down at the roof to cause the roof to go outwards like this. That's the stress that's there. Then as the ice dams get bigger, and they go over the side, you get large icicles, the load then shifts to the edge of the roof. So now what you're having is, that edge is now flipping up, it's acting like a bottle over. So now you're having this different places where these joints are, it's pulling and pushing and opening up holes. And I've been told different ways how the roof was built, how there's no felt underneath, and all these, these are all different things that are gonna cause problems, create an ice dam. And that's what we got, and I know in room 5, there were 20-plus ceiling tiles that had gotten wet, no kidding. This thing was designed, should never have been had, put into this configuration, because these flat roofs in this way, I, of the many, many buildings I've seen, I've never seen this. Corey, have you ever seen this?
No.
Anybody here have ever seen this? So what we're dealing with is something that should have never have been done in this configuration, in my opinion. So, Plusman O'Neil came in, they made two recommendations. They basically recommended replacing the ceiling tiles in classroom 5, and replace the pipe insulation in the boiler room. Now, we looked at the building from a mold standpoint. Now EPA, it have a guideline, it's online, any, it's free, you can look at, called Mold Remediation in Schools and Commercial Buildings. This is the national guideline for mold fixing. And so basically, what they tell you is, is that, one, you figure out what the water is and you stop the water leak. Two, is that you clean or replace the materials that, that have been water damaged. Three, is that you clean it. Four, is that you clean it. Five, do you clean it. Six, is that you can get people in there without having health complaints, you're done. The last line that they have in their guideline is that ultimately, this is a judgment call, there's no easy answer with regard to mold. So, the thing is, is that when we're looking at this type of thing, it comes down to cleaning and repair. And so, what we would recommend is a very simple thing, repair the roof, because you can take out the ceiling tiles, the problem is, is that next time it rains or snows, it's gonna get wet again. The second thing is, is that as insulation gets wet, its ability to prevent heat from going through the insulation decreases the more wet it gets, it gets compressed. So the thing also is, is that moisture can be held there, and it can cause odors and different things. And as you saw, the insulation on the underside is silver, so it's water impermeable. So moisture is gonna stay there. So what we're recommending is not only, if the ceiling tiles get removed, remove the insulation, because insulation isn't doing you anything right now. And so, third is, is to monitor, replace the ceiling tiles as needed. The ceiling tile, just because they're wet don't mean, does not mean that they're molding. It tells me that they're wet, okay? So the key is, in order to grow mold, you have to have it not saturated, you have to have it watered every once in a while, just like with a plant. You don't wanna drown a plant in order to get a big plant, you wanna give it a little water. So if you know that they're wet, the cost of doing business is replacing ceiling tiles. And then clean the classrooms, because any type of replacing a ceiling tile, you're gonna get dust, you're gonna get debris. Just in any building, you will see, if you take out a ceiling tile, there'll be a sheen of dust that's on top of it, that just gathers from use of the building. So we would recommend cleaning. Now there are other things in the building that we found were sources potentially of either microbial growth or odors or irritants, and so I'll go through these. Open drain pipes, and there were a number of significant drains that are throughout the building that did not have wet, wet traps. The purpose of a trap is, every sink should have these, they're coat, water gets down into that U-bend, and it forms an airtight seal, so that air from the sewer system and methane gas and other odors can't get back and come up through the drain if there's a rainstorm. If these traps are dry, you now have a straight line down either the storm drain or whatever else this is connected to. So, one of the things that we did find was this condensation drain, which was connect, is connected to the air handling unit for the main office. And the picture on the left is how we found it. Basically, that pipe where the insulation is, and that housing up beneath that insulation, they weren't connected, they were open to the air. So anything, time you would have, rain, it would push air back up that system. On the left, you can see where the white is, that has been repaired, so that's taken off the border. But there are others, so I'm gonna talk a little bit about the ventilation system. The building in general uses unit ventilators. Basically what they do is they bring in air from the outside, they bring in air from the classrooms through a vent. Two louvers in the bottom basically control the amount of fresh air to the amount of air from the room. It goes to a filter, it goes to a heating element, it goes to a fan, and then gets ejected through the top. And so there's many different components in this. This is what your system generally looks like, it's the big metal box that blows air in the classroom. Now, the thing is, is that these things suck air from the outside. Each one of these vents are basically an air intake for your unit ventilators, that's their purpose. And the roof has exhaust vents, each of the different ones that look like mushrooms, those are for bathrooms or for the kitchen, or things of that nature. And if we come back to this photo here, we think that that vent, there's a fan behind it, that serves as the exhaust vent for the classrooms. Now, when we look at a ventilation system, we look and measure certain things, such as carbon dioxide, temperature, relative humidity, we check for carbon monoxide, and particulate matter of a diameter of 2.5 microns or less. That is a size where particles can get down into the lungs, could cause irritation. We did the sampling throughout the building, and basically what we found was basically the ventilation system in most of the classrooms was perfectly fine, it was doing the job it was supposed to do. The carbon dioxide levels were below 800. Above 800, we would suggest increasing the fresh air supply. Now on the building, now I'll talk a little bit about the unit ventilators, because of their age, they have some issues. The temperatures that we measured were all within our guidelines of 78 degrees to 78 degrees, the humidities were all within our guidelines of 40 to 60%. We measured no carbon monoxide, so nothing was venting into the building from the furnace or from vehicles on the outside. And we did do measurements for particulate matter, we used the number 35 or above to indicate that there's an issue. Some of the areas that we saw in and around the kitchen were higher than 35, and what we think is, is that the cafeteria vents, exhaust vents could be turned on or should be checked to see that they're actually exhausting the cooking odors and the cooking particles that could be produced when, when that happens. Just to give you the slide, for example, 800 is what we use for our number for judging whether or not a ventilation system needs to be adjusted. There's a lot of different numbers out there that are used to try to judge whether or not something adequate is not, but we never get anywhere near the worker safety standards for this, which is 5,000, and nowhere, anywhere in this building at all. So we're looking at something that actually recirculates there, because the ventilation system does two things. It will take, not only does it provide heat, but what it will do is to bring in air from the outside to dilute whatever is in the room. So if there's something there that's a respiratory irritant, that dilution will decrease its concentration, which will decrease the dosage, so therefore should decrease the symptoms. The other part of the system is an exhaust system. I can't see where it is in this room, but it is basically a vent that grabs air and basically sends it outdoors. So you have dilution and removal, that's how the system works. Now if something is there nobbling that, it can't do the job that it can do, because really, what we're looking at with the ventilation system is, there can be in any building a laundry list of things that can be respiratory irritants. And so not only we do, do we look at the adequacy of the ventilation, but what we do is we look at all the other irritants that can be found inside of the building, to either suggest an elimination or reduction of those. So that when we looked at the building in 2009, that was a unit ventilator in the classroom, with all sorts of different materials on it. Now the thing is, we recommend that this thing be free and clear, because there's a vent at the bottom that's being blocked. If that is blocked, it's not gonna hear from the classroom, it's gonna make the air coming in more cold, because it's gonna suck more air from the outside. If it's heating, all the different materials that are on top of that, what they're made out of can become aerosolized. I'll never forget this job, we walked into this building, it stunk of crayons. The kids had actually taken into classrooms and stuck crayons into the heating element of the unit ventilators, and they never cleaned them. Wax is an irritant. The different things that are in plastics are an irritant. How many people here ever got, got a school book that really had that awful stench? You know, you know that smell? Put that on a classroom unit ventilator, it's now all over the room. And the thing about chemicals is that I can guarantee you, all of them are irritants. So what we're looking at in a building like this, with a ventilation system of this, this age, is to either, to identify and try to reduce the number of irritants. Problem is, is that we looked at the building, I mean, lots of different places, had lots of different cardboards and plastics and things, sitting, sitting on top of the unit ventilator to be heated in the winter. These things can produce whatever the chemicals are that these things are made out of, and put them in the air for irritation. So that any sort of paper, I mean, how many, I remember construction paper used to have this really good odor, right? You get a lot of it. That's what would happen if you put it on top of the unit ventilator. And so, you can see, we found this, this was not any one single classroom, but then each classroom has an exhaust vent. Now can anybody see the exhaust vents? Because I can't. That's why they need to be free and clear, because the air is supposed to go to those and be removed. So, it went back, I'm gonna do that. So, alright, I just lost it. So I'll just, Mike?
Yes? Just a minor correction. We did find some slight levels of carbon monoxide by loading dock area, 1.5帕/公斤, which is very slight. We went and checked that a little while later, and everything was background levels.
Yeah, that's right. That's why. Thank you. So we know the building was built in 1954, and that there was a renovation done in 1991. And just a couple of different pieces of information. The general expected life, service life of a unit ventilator, those are the different components that you can find inside of these, these units. those are the different components that you can find inside of these units, is roughly 20 years. So now you're looking at the ventilation system in that building is roughly beyond its service life that as of now, or as of a couple of years ago. And that the system, what we like to see is that each classroom be prioritized, so more fresh air is coming in than was leaving. The thing is, is that if the unit ventilator and the exhaust system is beyond its service life, rebalancing it won't help, because a lot of times you try to get these things adjusted, and then a week later, they go out of whack, it's wasted money. So, we don't recommend, did not recommend readjusting that. The other thing is, is that according to School Building Authority, buildings are expected to have roughly a lifespan of roughly 50 years. So the building was built in 55, we know that. We know that it was renovated in 91, so there's some different issues. So, with regard to what its current status is as far as, as far as its obsolescence. So what we know is that the operational capacity of the system has been exceeded, and that you can't balance it, and that we would not recommend rebalancing it. Now, there are other things that we found in the building that are all potentially respiratory irritants. Cleaning products, use of air fresheners, cosmetics with fragrances, materials near the vents I mentioned already, and dust and debris. Just a couple of different examples, this is a cleaning issue. And/or being aware of where these things are. Like soft plastics are gonna give you that nice smell, that really good plastic smell when you keep them, that's what can happen. The other thing is, picture on the left, that is actually the vent at the base of the unit ventilator like this here, and they're completely clogged with dirt and debris. They need to be cleaned. So we're looking at that. The other thing is, is that upholstered furniture, things of that nature, that stuff has to be cleaned as well, because we are concerned with the proliferation of dust mites. And so if someone has a dust mite allergy, you go through great lengths in your home to make your home dust mite free. The thing is, is that if you have, what dust mites will eat is human skin cells. And so upholstered furniture have to be cleaned just as often as you would clean carpeting. The thing is, is that if the material that's in the classroom is school issue, the school needs to clean it. But if it isn't, I can't really justify saying that they have to clean it, but it has to be cleaned. And then there are other things, such as different chemicals, Lysol has ammonia in it, WD-40 has a number of different chemicals in it and such, and those are all, like I said, irritants. Now, how many people here have been in the wing with classes 1 and 11 and smelled a funny smell? Okay? Okay, cause I remember walking in, room 5, what did I smell? Yes, we had this, there's this very odd smell when you walk in there. It smells like cat urine, okay? Originally, what I thought was this was something that was tied to the plumbing system or such, but we found out what it was. Someone in their infinite wisdom decided to plant a holly bush outside of the south wing of this building, and what's happening is that that odor is actually that bush. Certain hollies have that certain smell, so whoever decided to put that bush there, if it was planted there when they did the renovation, it's been smelling like that for years. I don't know when it was planted.
I do.
What?
Probably about 10 years ago, we beautified the garden.
Okay.
And I could look back and see, but I know the Girl Scouts did a little project, we had a bird twitter.
Okay.
I believe that's where the holly bush.
Okay. So, but the thing is, is that here you have something that has a certain, I'll use the word fragrance to it, near the air intake from the classroom. So if you get us, and this, unfortunately, this part of the building is facing south, so if you get a very slow south wind that's pushing against the building, it's gonna push that odor under certain conditions and be captured by the air intake. And then get pushed into the classroom by the unit ventilators. So just being aware of what's on the outside of the building can be a source of odors. And the other thing is, is that something else that they absolutely should have never have done when they designed this building, is this unit ventilator, well, mulch tends to hold moisture on the ground, right? And one of the problems that we originally were told about was the floors slipping over. Well, what type of person will build an air intake that in New England that is about this high off the ground? How high was the snow last year? Generally, you wanna see these at least three feet off the ground. And on the other side, they're right at the garden level, you've got to take out the mulch, okay? Lower the ground around the building, so that you can prevent the moisture from the ground from being captured by the system and then shunt it into the building. Now, when I was in 2009, I don't know if you can see that, there were concerns about these dents in the floor, okay, that had accumulated material. All that was, was basically, it's a cleaning issue. Basically, it's dirt and debris. It's, what happened is that the floors get wet, it gets into the mastic of the tile. The tile, that starts to expand, it gets sticky, and so that's actually dirt and debris from the classroom. So it's a cleaning issue, and it wasn't anything more than that. So, we made a number of different recommendations back in 2009, such as applying a heavy coat of wax to fill in the gaps. We recommended putting in mats along the floor entrances to try to knock down the dirt, that was not done. Increasing the filtration on the ventilation system, that was done. So the filters are now taking out a lot of dust, everybody, the size of pollen, mold spores, and mold bodies. And remove the blockages from the unit ventilators, as you can see, that is still an ongoing issue. Move plants away from the unit ventilators, we didn't see a whole lot of those, just go around. And one of the other thing is that we found the use of tennis balls on the end of chairs. Tennis balls, the internal bladder of tennis balls made out of latex. So if you have anybody with a latex allergy, that could be a source of latex exposure, so that's what we recommended, that they come out. Plus, if they get wet, they can grow mold. So, for these recommendations, number one, repair the roof. Two, remove the insulation. Three, repair the insulation above, above the ceiling tiles after the roof is repaired, and then remove the shrubbery from the exterior of the building from around fresh air intakes. And then to remove insulation from other areas in the building, if there's water damage in the same way. And to basically manage the water damage as it happens, because, well, basically, I've never seen a roof repair itself. And that really is the answer, it needs to be repaired. Then operate the ventilation system as needed. One of the things that, since the system is not balanceable, using and cracking the windows is perfectly fine, this building is not energy efficient, it doesn't have air conditioning in it, so cracking the windows to provide fresh air, I would recommend it. Just be sure that they get closed at night because of the security issues. Then not to deactivate the unit ventilators. Close the doors, so that the exhaust system is exhausting from the classroom and not the hallway. Repair the leaks from the unit ventilator 12. Balancing, once that, that could be, if that could be done, I talked about this. And these are all rather standard types of things, but basically, different things that we can recommend to eliminate and reduce the number of irritants in the building, because we know that you have plans to see whether or not the building should be renovated and/or replaced. And so, really what we're in this point, at this point is, is at a juncture, to make recommendations so that it can be used and livable until that happens. So, and I think I just got one more slide, that's me, okay? As I said, I'm the director of the indoor air quality program. If you have any questions, that is our phone number, that is our real phone number. There's always someone who answers the phone. Because one of the things I do, as well as Corey, is we respond to chemical spills in buildings, so I don't think that you want to get, if you call the fire department, you don't wanna get voicemail. But that, someone is always there to answer the phone. That is our website, if you look for Mass Department of Public Health and Indoor Air Quality, you can find lots of documentation, lots of guidelines, and we do post our reports online, because it is public. So, with that, I can open it up for any questions if you have any. Yes? Actually, can we have people, if you come up, can people come up just so the mic here, and the mic is a little bit farther away, so if we can, we kind of have to take up a little bit.
Stacy Miller. Removing all the insulation, what's that gonna do, the temperature in the building?
At this point, the insulation is not gonna have any effect on the temperature, because there's so many holes in it, that it's not really providing insulation at this point. So, so I don't think it will really have any difference. And my concern is, when water gets into this material, what it will do. And so the standard practice is, is to take out insulation once it's wet. And so, the thing is, I will not recommend, unless you repair the roof, to put more insulation in, because it's wasting money, because it'll only get wet again, and then you're repeating this. And I know that one thing that school departments have is the same problem I have. I don't have any money to do this with it. So we're working with very short, short means at this point. So I'd rather not recommend something that isn't gonna be done or be handled. Yes, please.
Hi.
Hi.
Do you happen to know, maybe I'm not asking the right person, but when ceiling tiles are replaced, if they get wet, do they, could they give off a particle that would be an irritant? That would cause a rash in the child?
It would cause a rash? That is one, I'll have to give you a standard answer, is it depends. If the child is hypersensitive to it, that's what that potentially is, and it will be something called a contact dermatitis. In general, ceiling tiles are made out of cellulose, and they're bound, and they're bound with starch. So, but they are, and can, ceiling tile dust can be irritating in and of itself.
But they're new, so it wouldn't be like dust, like dust mites, but it might?
No, it would be the material in and of itself. And the other thing is, is that what's on top, what's above the ceiling tiles is fiberglass insulation. And so you can have, and so fiberglass could potentially cause a rash if you're handling it directly. But in general, it would be, in general, if it's contact dermatitis, the usual places that you would see that would be the back of the hands, the tips of the ears, the nose, and the bridge of the nose, back of the neck. And so all the exposed areas, if it's underneath, then that's something.
Okay.
In general.
Okay, thank you.
Was that good? I answered all your questions? Yes, please.
Just to be clear, you did not find any mold when you were doing this?
I can find mold in any building even after cleanup, okay? And the thing is, is that every building is gonna have a certain amount of mold in it just by us walking through here. We brought it in with us from the dirt, dirt is mold. But the thing is, when you find this type of material, the recommendation is, is to replace the material that's wet.
But did you find any upper levels of mold anywhere?
We didn't do air testing for mold. We don't, we don't do air testing for mold, because no one recommends you do it.
But there could be.
Pardon?
There could be.
Once the, if the materials have been removed and it's been cleaned and people can reoccupy, then the materials that have gotten wet, that would be, that would be the recommendation that we would make in order to make it, remove the materials. Get rid of them.
Mike?
Yes?
If you're asking, if you're asking if we saw any visible mold growth on any materials, the answer is no.
Is there, so you won't come back and do any air quality testing?
We did it.
Oh, you did do it?
We did all the air quality testing, but we don't do mold testing.
I mean, mold, yeah, air quality for mold.
Well, we did, we did air quality testing, that's why I went through all the different types of carbon dioxide and temperature.
Right, but you won't come back to the mold?
Because there's no, the thing is, is that my recommendation would be, if it's wet, to replace it.
Okay.
That's, that's, that, I mean, that's something that I think we can, anybody can recognize something that's wet, is that if you clean it, or you either, if it's coarse, like a ceiling tile, you replace it. If it's not, then you can't.
So my next question is, above the ceiling tiles and the insulation, is there wood up there that would be getting wet?
Wood is, potentially yes, but wood is an interesting material, because it's somewhere between a non-forest material and forest material. And usually, when you see these things have problems, is that they have to be saturated with moisture for long periods of time. Some buildings that I, I remember seeing a building which had its water shut off in the middle of winter, that had, I don't know, millions of gallons of water that turned its hard old floors into basically, it looked like plywood. The thing about wood is, is that generally, it's mold resistant, unless it's put into a place where it's constantly exposed to moisture. Now, the thing about ceiling tile, I mean, above the ceiling area, is that with ice dams, the problem is, is that there's heat in the attic. Once you start to dry things, and particularly wood, it will prevent mold growth in and of itself. And what I did see from, I didn't see anything that looked like it was moldy in and of itself. In areas where you have it below grade, like on the underside of a floor above a wet basement, yes. But here, it's dry underneath, and you have it constantly heated, and there's not really a place for the moisture to accumulate. Whereas ceiling tiles are just like a sponge. And the insulation, it can hold it. But it's not, wood doesn't generally do that. Even if it was, it would be very under.
Did you look at the wood under it, like specifically?
From what I can see.
Specifically room 5?
Yes.
It's been leaking for a long time?
Yes, I looked, I, those, all those pictures I took of all the insulation, that was above room 5. I didn't completely take every ceiling tile down.
Right.
But in seeing what I did see, it didn't, you know, in the areas that were above, replaced ceiling tiles, I did not see that, that as a problem. So, and besides, it would be, you do get to a point where it would be, there would be a significant odor attached to it as well, and it wasn't there at all.
Thank you.
David Hill, are there any issues with mold within the HVAC system itself? Are you able to see that?
We looked at, we opened up the HVAC system, and like, again, it comes down to moisture exposure. And the unit ventilators have filters in them that would prevent that from getting up into the system. But I will tell you that there's a lot of dust and dirt debris inside the system, and it should be standard practice to vacuum that out when the filters are changed. And what we saw in one of the pictures is that the entire bottom vent is filled with debris. Now, if that's exposed to extended time for moisture, sure, I would say potentially yes. It becomes, it's still, it comes down to a cleaning issue. But as far as the airflow and having it, putting something in the air potentially, that's why the filter is there.
So the HVAC system is in the attic?
The exhaust system is. Every classroom, I believe, has a unit like this one over here, so it's actually in the classroom in and of itself. And what we were seeing is, potentially with the floors slipping over, is that moisture from the outside, because wet soil is going to evaporate moisture. This is that if those units are running, it gets captured, it gets put into the building, and if the slab of the floor is below the dew point, it's gonna slip over. So it's a matter for how do you better control humidity inside the building.
Would you recommend using dehumidifiers?
We have a whole guideline that we wrote about how to deal with high humidity in un-air-conditioned buildings, which are most schools in Massachusetts. Part of it is increasing the airflow through the building. Part of it is, is having other doors open inside the, inside all the classrooms, as well as the closets, so that you're not having pockets of hot moisture air trapped. Creating airflow, equilibrating the temperature. It's where you have high concentrations of moisture, low concentrations of moisture, cold temperatures. What we wanna see is to have everything is uniform temperature, because it's where you have that map, that large temperature difference. That's where you're starting, gonna start to grow moisture. Or you have a moisture source on the outside.
UAL is low now, but in the summer, it's gonna get higher.
Absolutely.
So it's gonna be very moist in the classroom, since there's no air conditioning, right?
Not necessarily. If everything, it depends on what the temperature of the floor is. See, the walls generally are not gonna be that temperature, both the floors on slab, and one of the issues that we've discussed is whether or not the slab has insulation underneath it to equilibrate the temperature. Roughly, if the floor is below a certain temperature, it's gonna select. So the thing is, if you know it's gonna select, and you don't put things on the floor, that are gonna potentially grow mold. So we run into this problem constantly, where we have throw runs down in a high humid environment. The only thing you can do with those is to roll them up and put them into the interior of the building away from where the cold is. So you have to get it off the floor. This is why you don't store. This is why you don't store stuff in your basement. It's the same concept, except that here, the building is built on a slab and the temperature is below a certain temperature.
So, possible foundation issues?
That's what I'm thinking.
There should be cracks in the foundation?
There could be cracks or that there's no insulation, there's not insulation underneath the foundation because roughly, temperature of soil is going to be somewhere fifty and sixty degrees Fahrenheit. And so, anything in contact with it is going to have more or less the same temperature. So, if you introduce air into a building that is eighty degrees temperature and eighty percent humidity, its dew point is going to be seventy-six degrees. So, if that slab is in the sixties, it is by definition wet. And so, you may not see it, but there's moisture going, is going to gather on it. And so, if you know that, you don't put, so if you know something is going to be wet, you don't put things on it or in it or around it that can potentially be colonized with mold. Because to fix something like that would take a tremendous amount of effort and time. To undo a design issue, it either takes a lot of money or it takes you to be clever and to figure your way around it. Yes, sir?
What might answer that question for you is, when towns do a feasibility study for a building, it's very intensive, talk to bottom, system by system, inside and out. They look at the electrical, they look at the plumbing, they look at the exterior, they look at the roofing, they look at the foundation. It's a very expensive process, as you know, but it's very thorough and it may answer a lot of those questions that you might have. Unless there's someone here from ninety-one on the building committee that helped build it, and that's not always the case. So, those feasibility studies, they're about this thick and they cover the building top to bottom, so I think, I think that might be helpful.
Has that been done before?
There's one that's currently in process right now, so the Cly Brown is part of the Mass State Building Authority project, and we're actually right in the middle of a feasibility study of the Cly Brown School, so.
Do you know when the last one was done?
So, it's a program that you need to submit to every year and be invited into, so.
Probably nineteen ninety-one. When it was done, because that's when they redid the building?
Before, because that building was built, so it was probably ninety or eighty-nine or something like that.
It's probably public record.
Possibly, I don't know. Finding any sort of, any sort of records for buildings, once you get beyond a certain timeframe, it's very hard to find them. So, you'd have to start with the plaque on the building to see if it's constructed and working or not for sure.
Having to, that probably would not have time to read it all anyway. For the ceiling tiles, are they going to be constantly replaced as they get wet? Like, how often are we going to have to replace these? And what's the cost?
I don't know how much they are individually, but yes, right now, what we are doing is when they're wet, when they're seen that they're wet, they're getting replaced.
Is that after like every storm?
Yep. They're walking through the building now after every rainstorm. Mr. Phelps or someone he designates is walking through the building, creating a checklist of which ones need to be replaced and being handed off to facilities.
Is there any carpet within the school?
I don't remember. Just this is the library.
Right, right.
The library could have.
The library actually was part of the original nineteen fifteen building, I believe, and so that's going to have a different.
But the carpet is not, the carpet's within the last five to ten years.
As far as it's slicking over with moisture, that issue seems to be the two additions that were added in the nineties, not the new build, the older part of the building as far as I know. In fact, that's where in two thousand nine, when I was here, those are the areas that I saw a problem.
The only other thing you recommend replacing would be folks if they were wet or wallboards?
If they, well, the thing is, if they, if they have visible mold on them, yes.
So, how would you see if it's behind the wall, I guess?
Well, it isn't, it very likely isn't stuff that's on the walls that got wet. Okay, because they're not, they may be contacting the floor, but you start to lose, the temperature starts to increase the higher you get to the wall. So, I don't think that's really the issue, but it's, you see signs of it, you can see break through, you can see staining on the other side of it, so if there's any signs of moisture. A lot of times, there'll be discoloration around the frame because as the water condenses, it will drip downwards. Without any of those signs, and particularly, there will, there usually is a bit of a musty small attached to it as well. So, absent all of that, it doesn't seem to me to be wet.
You inspected all the wallboards?
We looked at it as much stuff as we could and it didn't make any sense, it did, that did not make any sense. I have seen situations where they were put up on the exterior walls of rehabilitated factory buildings and people putting their diplomas up there and moisture comes through the wall and destroys the diplomas because they're behind the walls and the moisture has no place to go. We did not see that designer.
Other thing you would replace, right?
If there was, yeah, and a lot of times, these are made of a harder material, so they're less porous, they're less porous. So, the things that we look at are the soft porous things that we would consider replacing. Ceiling tile happens to be one of them.
Thank you very much for coming. We really appreciate your help, one, in going through the building and doing the announcements and coming in, spending time tonight to watch.
Look, you're quite welcome. And we've been asked to come here as well, is that still in the cards?
Yeah.
Okay.
When, when, I know you're busy with several buildings.
Yes, okay. But we're, you know, we're not disappearing. We're available, you can find us, we're always glad to talk. And we're looking at this as, it's an ongoing relationship because, you know, we're, you all are here, but we also deal with all the guitar states, so if you need our help, we're happy to help.
Just switch rooms guys.
Actually, David, we talked about generally the selection. Next, what was in chair report for, so in my, what I'm going to do is have Nancy walk through the recommendations that we've already done to implement and action items that we've identified.
Thank you, Mr. James. The, first I wanted to give you an update that the roofers were out last week, found in the sections of BNC wings, is it BNC wings, that continue to have some leaking. Found several, found a hole near the drain pipe, near room five, where the leak was, the drain pipe was the problem because of the ice damming last year, it got frozen and filled up and plugged. And so, the roofers did find a hole there, which they repaired, which we, seems to have been affected now.
It's better.
It's better?
It's still dripping.
Okay. And as we've said, Mr. Phelps is checking the building daily. They did also find some nail holes and some missing shingles, so they, we will continue to have the roofers out to look for and try to identify the source of the remaining leaks that we have, we know currently with this latest storm, the main leak was in the cafeteria and that's on the flat roof area. And our own personnel was up on the roof to try to divert the water away from the bat area of the cafeteria. And as soon as they are able, we will again be trying to repair that leak in the cafeteria and kitchen area. So, that Mr. Phelps has done a great job, you know, and staff is alerting us to any remaining leaks. And we will continue to have the roofers come out and try to identify them and fill, seal, fix any holes that we can find. Excuse me. So, the other thing that Mr. Phelps has been very, working with the maintenance staff and the custodians on, since Mr. Feeney came out on March tenth, we had, he had given us a verbal, some of these recommendations verbally, so we immediately started rectifying what we could in, in terms of his recommendations. So, we're keeping track of leaks, getting, trying to stay on top of that, replacing ceiling tiles, all ceiling tiles that were stained have been removed and replaced. We did have a period of time where the, we had to get a replacement shipment of another batch of ceiling tiles, so there were a couple of days in there where some of the tiles were missing. And as soon as we got the next batch of ceiling tiles and they were able to cut around certain vents, et cetera, those were replaced, I believe. Currently, they all are replaced, although the new leaks are being monitored and those ceiling tiles from the snow will also be replaced. A maintenance list is created through the walkthroughs that are being done with Mr. Phelps and the lead custodian and documented. The issues with the ventilation are being worked on, the one unit ventilator that he mentioned had a leak, has been repaired. The, we have a system in place where we are documenting which units, let me back up a little bit. The filters have changed twice a year normally, but as he, Mr. Feeney mentioned, the, they needed to be vacuumed out as well. So, that maintenance is being done in a schedule with the custodians. It takes about an hour for each unit and they're documenting two or three a night that they're able to do, we're not doing it during school hours, and keeping track to make sure those are all vacuumed out and the dust removed from inside as well as the filters replaced. There is, we had a staff meeting, Mr. Phelps and I met with the staff on Monday, March fourteenth, to talk to them about the need to clear the air intake, have a three foot wide area around any air take vents, so it's clear. Also spoke to them about removing materials from on top of the univents, removing rugs, plants, moving pencil sharpeners away from the univents, any items that Mr. Feeney mentioned or we've observed that could introduce irritants into the air, pillows, stuffed animals, such things as those also. Storage is, as we all know, very tight in classrooms. We don't have a lot of storage space at Cly Brown and there are a lot of materials, as you saw from the pictures, so we'll be working with staff to identify areas that they can store things and, so that they're not stored in classrooms, things that maybe are for a science unit that they may have already completed or won't be getting to until May, for example. Teachers have been encouraged to open cracked classroom windows to increase the fresh air exchange. We've asked staff to forward any and all maintenance issues via email to Mr. Phelps so that he can track them and follow up with the custodians. There, in the past, sometimes teachers would directly mention something to a custodian and wouldn't necessarily contact the building principal about something, it might just get fixed, but we're now asking that we get all of it in emails so that Mr. Phelps and the director of facilities can follow up. And then supplementary, the staff were asked to put out any supplementary cleaners they had brought from home or any materials. Those have been checked by custodians. We will remove and have removed, I believe, any materials that are not DPH-approved cleaners or materials, plants, as we mentioned. They don't necessarily require us to remove all plants just to make sure that the dishes underneath are cleaned periodically, et cetera, but if there is any concern, you know, it's safest probably not to have plants in classrooms. It's been many years since we've allowed any animals in classrooms. And we will continue to go through all of the other recommendations that were made. I, of course, took notes again tonight as well as reading the, and we will be addressing all of the recommendations made by the Department of Public Health to improve indoor air quality. The last thing is the infrared roof scan that we hope to have to identify where some more of the leaks might be occurring because water can travel. That is now scheduled for the week of, first week in April. The roof unfortunately must be dry with the sun shining down on it for at least five hours in order to generate high quality results using the thermal scan. So, we're not able to do it this week, you know, and it's scheduled for the first week in April.
The other thing in terms of the initial air quality in the PC, we got the first follow-up bi-weekly test back. We got the initial results back yesterday from the canister, the testing done on March thirteenth with no, no results that were above health safety standards. Literally just got it from the consultant yesterday morning, the results were emailed. So, when any, as we said, any reports are made available, we'll put them online and they'll be on DPH budget sites as well. So, that's the first round and we'll continue going through that process as we outlined. Just kind of, no other, or any other questions anybody has, otherwise move on through the rest of our agenda.
So, what is the cost of all the ceiling tiles?
I don't know how much the ceiling tiles are worth. We're covering the ceiling tiles through our operating budget. What I can tell you in terms of cost is that the total cost of, the total cost of the studies and the work done between February twenty-fourth and February twenty-eighth, or maybe it was the twenty, whatever that initial, from the time we closed the building to the time we opened the building, the work from that was fifty-five thousand dollars. The work that, that the follow-up testing is going to cost anywhere from an additional, up to one ninety-five, up to additional hundred and forty thousand dollars. That is going to be, is going to cost us through January of seventeen to do all of these bi-weekly, then to monthly tests.
How much would it cost to replace the roof?
Over the.
Over the.
Yeah.
We had, and this goes back to when, I don't know, was it a year ago when we did the feasibility study presentation? It goes back. Cost of, to do the work that would happen, like most critical work through HVAC, all that was five million dollars.
And this is more important, HVAC for the roof.
The struggle that we're in is exactly what Mr. Feeney had said. With, with us being in the process of the SBA with the building, to be going through the process that hopefully... in the process of the MSBA with the building, to be going through the process that hopefully, you know, within the next year we'll know and we'll have a design and we'll be asking the town for, to move forward with a large project, to go and do, and ask for a five million dollars to put into the school now that we've potentially taken down a year from now. In our opinion, is not a wise choice to, to one request to spend that kind of money to pull up. Hopefully it would be a very short-term out path. I think that if the building were to not, if we were to not be able to move forward with the MSBA, we would literally be turning around, probably at the same town meeting and having a list of items that we'd be saying, here are the three, four, or five things and here's the price tag that we need to do to make this building something that can last a million dollars. And that's really where we're at right now.
Is there any state funding available since there are?
So the MSBA projects will cover up to fifty-one percent of what we build that's within their criteria.
For our current issue?
No.
We have no state funding available?
If we, if we don't, if we don't go through the MSBA process, if we don't approve whatever the plan comes out of this feasibility study, if that override, that debt exclusion doesn't pass and we have to spend the five million dollars on the bill on, to fix what we need, that's a hundred percent millis taxpayer funded, the state will not kick in on that effect.
But how long are you willing to wait before we?
We'll know when, do we think that, oh, next, we'll know by next March.
Yeah, we'll know by next March. September we'll know the project scope and cost, estimated cost, and then we would estimate that by next March, so we'll come to the town for a vote either in January or February of seventeen.
And then we would know whether we have a new school or we will do repairs. Then that means that we should do repairs on all the, as new?
Yeah.
Is there any kind of structural repairs we do or that one issues or it's a flat dent?
Yeah, we have, we, we do have, we actually have three roofers coming in to give us an updated cost of, of what it would take to, to replace the roof. We know it's probably, it's going to be in the millions of dollars, in the million-dollar range. But we are going through that in part to just be able to say, if we were to do it today, this is what it would cost to do it.
Mr. Chair, I can give you, we've spent about sixteen thousand dollars to date, thirteen thousand for the tarts, the, if I recall, it was either six or eight hundred for each order of ceiling tiles, which, you know, I forget how many were in each load of ceiling tiles, but the total cost so far on roof repairs is about sixteen thousand?
No, that includes roof repairs and ceiling tiles, or just ceiling tiles.
That's for the roof repairs and the ceiling tiles.
So what's your?
It doesn't include the overtime that we've paid staff.
For ceiling tiles and roof repairs, how much do you guys expect to pay within the next, I guess, year?
I don't know, we've just, to just start, to, we've just kind of started this, we probably, we need another couple, probably another month to say what's our trend of how many times do we have to replace and how many do we have to replace.
Yeah, so we're going to make a decision when we want to repair or replace the whole thing. It's getting up there and up there and up there to repair it and ceiling tiles and insulation's going to have to go in there again, how much is that going to cost?
We're not going to be in a, we are not going to be in a position to, to put, one, to do a million dollar, to do a million dollar roof repair would require a town meeting vote and a debt exclusion. The time for that for May has passed, the next potential option will be November and to, with a vote on the whole new school coming that following January, it's not going to, we're, we're not going to, if we have to, if we have to muddle through with finding the resources to repair the roof between now and the vote next January, February, that's what we're going to do. We, we just don't, it's, it's not, my personal opinion, it's not practical to go and try and put a new roof on right now. Logistically, we can't do it, in the early, we could do it in November and by that time, you're right on the heels, but we've talked about, if it's a town meeting where we need two-thirds vote to, to pad a debt exclusion to get the school, if Article One is debt exclusion for the school, well, Article Two, Three, and Four may be roof, HVAC, et cetera, you know, so that if Article One doesn't pass and we move to Article Two and say, okay, you know, if we're not doing the school, here's the thing that we need to deal with.
And what, do you guys take the insulation out in the entire school or just certain areas of the school?
Just, just the areas that were wet. With active leaks, so, and we are making progress on fixing the leaks, so that's the good news. The bad news is they're not, there, there are still a few leaks, there were fewer leaks than before.
So you also fix the leaks and then put insulation before next winter?
So just piggybacking on the feasibility study, so best case scenario would next winter be the last winter that the kids would be in that building? How soon after, so how soon would it be if everything went perfect? How soon would you say it would be before our kids are in that building?
Three years.
It's a two-year construction period is what the architects have said. There's a forum actually on April thirteenth that talks about this project, there'll be another one that comes in May, they'll talk about timelines and those types of things, but what they've said so far is after the vote, there's at least a two-year construction timeline.
But they're still in this building or they're being like, come on?
It all, it all depends on what the decision is for the go-forward plan. So if it's a renovation to the existing building, then that might change where the children are located. If it's a brand-new building, then the children would stay in the existing facility until they're able to move into the new building.
Okay, so would be built, not in the same exact?
Still, still something to be determined, but.
So it's not like they just get for next winter and then?
No, we have a.
In every, best case scenario, that all happens, we have this great beautiful new school, is there like a plan in place then to have like this school?
So we, I run it, so.
I know, I'm subject, I'm just trying to figure out.
No, so, no, just, so we actually, the most recent submission that we put in, I think that was twenty fourteen, two thousand and fourteen, we put in our submission, every year we do an MSBA school building. The most recent one we put in was actually focused more on this building than Clyde Brown. What had happened was literally after we submitted the, the one for this building, we got brought in for the Clyde Brown because other districts didn't pass their plan and so there was money for the state, we were next in line. And, but we had, but it was on the Clyde Brown focus, not this one.
And you came to them obviously the same time and it doesn't, it doesn't happen?
Right, and what, yeah, we were hoping to entertain something that was more in the context.
So the kids are in the Clyde Brown now, are they going to go here and are they going to go through the whole thing again? But their kids will have these free discounts.
You have to be accepted into the MSBA, so it's not like we're going to turn around and. Right, you hear this building was two thousand and one.
I would just, okay, all right, thanks for.
Thank you.
So question, when you're replacing ceiling tiles and stuff coming out, dust, whatever is there, is somebody cleaning up on it specifically?
Yes.
Where is?
Kepa vacuum cleaners, yes, the air-filtered vacuum cleaners, yes, they do.
DPH gives a recommendation on the cleaning to do when the ceiling tiles are removed and that's what the facility staff is doing. So that Kepa that Nancy just mentioned, that's specifically the recommendation from DPH.
Okay, and that's been happening all along, do you know what it means for them?
Yes, I, I can't speak to every single tile because I wasn't there, but it is, it was the recommendation, it is the procedure that they have been using and is, you know, as far as I know, it, it has occurred with each tile.
Do you know how many more children have been sick since I was with that one?
Pardon me?
Do you know how many more children have been sick this year? I know you put up the asthma thing, I'm just talking about other instances.
Yeah, we've got the four years, going back four years, we had not a gradual floor spike in illnesses within Clyde Brown compared to itself, so compared to itself over the last four years, nor has it been any higher or any different of a trend than any than our districts around the state. So there has been no statistical difference in illnesses in the Clyde Brown going back four years.
Thank you.
Move on to action items.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Fallon.
I make a motion to approve the, the meeting, the working group meeting minutes for February twenty-third, two thousand and sixteen.
Second. Can we move it seconded, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Fallon.
I make a motion to approve the March eighth, two thousand and sixteen, school committee meeting minutes.
Second. Can we move it seconded, further discussion? All of them favor?
Aye.
No student representatives tonight, teacher representative?
Thank you, Clyde Brown, next Monday at six thirty PM, there will be a meeting for Spanish Emerging Information and that will start at six thirty PM. The third graders will have their MCAS next week, starting on Tuesday, March twenty-ninth, the thirtieth, and the thirty-first. And the homeschool association has sponsored healthy snack bags for all students, will be distributed by their individual teachers in their classrooms, trying to make it as least destructive as possible to help prepare the students for their MCAS. The following week, April fifth, sixth, and seventh, the grade fourth will have their MCAS. Both of these MCAs are just the reading portions of their MCAS. The middle school, starting yesterday, had forever grow breakfast available, which is a part of their fuel supply sixty grand that they received, and those breakfasts are a dollar fifty apiece or thirty cents if you're on the grade use lunch program. They also had their AM, intramural programs started yesterday and that will run through April fifteenth for grades five, that's on Mondays and Wednesdays in the morning, and grade six, it's Tuesdays and Thursdays. And this Friday will be a half-day for the middle and high school. March twenty-ninth, thirtieth, and thirty-first, in the middle school, they will have their PLA long comp and reading comprehension MCAS exams. The high school had a special needs dance run by local seniors for a special needs population. It was her senior project. It happened at Kid Surf last Friday night, it was a big success, and there were students from all the local districts that attended as well, so that was a piece of serious students and there's pictures posted that it can say of the students. They seem to have a very good time, they're very happy about it. We also have our MCAS started today and they'll continue tomorrow and Thursday for ELA. Today was a long comp and our reading will be on tomorrow and Thursday. We have a, the half-day also Friday, and May fourth, there is going to be a library, literary arts night here in this library as well as out at the tables. Student and local artist work will be displayed, there'll also be some musical accompaniment and a coffeehouse-style evening is planned for the town who would like to participate. They are able to do this through a grant from the Milis Cultural Council and that was thanks to Mrs. Diver, Mrs. Caro, and Ms. Norton. And then on April sixth, the school counselors are holding the eighth-grade rising parent night for information about what the differences are between the middle and high school. And there will be club information available also in the cafeteria prior to that, that will start, they'll be in the auditorium, it will start at six thirty PM, the club information will begin or will be available as of six PM.
Next, we will move to the superintendent's report and we'll have our fiscal seventeen budget presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, this is the first time I think anybody's come to the, and stayed for the budget presentation, so I'm thrilled to have you here and learn about the challenges, but also the good things we're doing with the very low per pupil expenditure in Milis. We have, I think, because of our culture in Milis, in the town, and in the schools, we are able to do a lot with a little. We have this idea of a small school, big family, but also a small-town, big family, a culture of caring, we encourage effort, character development, and we're focusing a lot on personalizing learning so that students, honestly, and many people in Milis have said it's like having a private school education in a public school. We, this year, this past year, were honored at the high school level for being an AP district honor district for having a very high percentage of students take advanced placement courses and pass those exams higher than most districts. So we are a district of distinction. We focus on what we believe are going to be the skills needed in the twenty-first century global economy. And we do that through a wonderful faculty that is very responsive to the students and the need, their needs, so they get to know their kids better than almost any other place. I've been in several districts, including, well, I won't say that on camera, including any place else I've worked. The challenge, district priorities are always, our core mission drives our budget, so we first and foremost try to maximize the learning and the well-being of our students. We are working hard on increasing more student engagement through more student voice and choice and project-based learning, focusing on those twenty-first century problem-solving skills. It's now, information can be gained through, very quickly through any phone, looked up very quickly, so it's not about learning information or content, it's about applying it to solve novel problems. We do know that eighty percent of jobs in the future will be connected in some way to a STEM field, science, technology, engineering, and that we're working hard to increase opportunities in Milis for students to have a very strong STEM foundation. And we're trying to do all this amidst the reductions that we're having to make. Those reductions are due basically because of a lack of revenue. For the past two years, the governor's budget has only increased Chapter Seventy education funding by twenty dollars per student. So with thirteen hundred and eighty-six, I believe, students currently in Milis, no, thirteen, yes, if you include our students who go to other district placements, thirteen eighty-five, that twenty dollars. That $20 per student only amounts to, it really is only about $25,000, $26,000 more. As you can imagine, our fixed costs rise much more than that. We have aging facilities, inadequate athletic fields. Students are coming to us with much greater mental health issues than in the past. Our rise in special education is generally due to mental health, or what is referred to as behavioral health issues. We do have fixed costs in software and expenses that, um, we need to also cover. The state mandates, of course, there's always, um, new state mandates, the latest one that was passed is the governor's opioid, uh, bill, which while we agree with philosophically, these mandates require schools to respond in many different ways without any additional funding, and the burden is on our nurses and staff. So that's just one example. There are many state mandates that have come down the pike over the years, and, um, it is trying to do more with less. We have next-generation science standards that we've been aligning to, working hard this year in the committee, and implementing and developing curriculum for that. The educator evaluation system is, um, time-consuming and burdensome, and it, uh, then we have MCAS 2.0, the next generation of MCAS. Our enrollment reached a high of about 1,500 kids in 2010. And during the past six years, it has declined. And with that decline comes less revenue from the state, because we get about $900, $9,600, uh, no, I'm sorry, $9,960 in our foundation budget per pupil. So the decline in enrollment generally is in the younger grades, kindergarten through grade three next year, and spread through those grades, um, it come, it means less funding from the state for us. It means our class sizes are lovely, though. Our class sizes generally this year in kindergarten are, uh, average of 14.6, under 20 for, or near, at most 20 in, um, the elementary building. Where we have class size issues is at the high school level, where some of the classes, especially in the social studies and history, might have 30. Um, I don't know if we have 32 last year, I know we have 32, uh, because we only have 3.2 teachers for social studies and history. But in the elementary grades, the class sizes are very good. School choice, um, is funding that we, we get $5,000 per, uh, student who chooses into Milis, and we have currently 75 students choicing into Milis. Generally, uh, those students are spread throughout the system. For example, we have seven seniors, they're, uh, approximately seven, you know, between two and seven per grade level, not enough to require, uh, the addition of a teacher, but bringing in much-needed funding. Students are allowed to choice out of Milis as well, we have, uh, fewer, and that trend has declined, which is good because that is revenue loss to Milis. So, um, you know, we have more than twice as many kids choicing in as are choosing out of Milis. We have fewer students attending Tri-County and North Hope Gaggy, um, than in the past, which is also means that we're retaining revenue for those students. Our charter school, um, we have very few students attending charter schools from Milis. And very few students are private or homeschool. Private and homeschool students don't impact our budget, but charter and vocational do with a loss of revenue, so, um, private and homeschool do not. So as you can see, the trend has been excellent. We're proud of the quality we've been able to provide. The reputation in Milis is, is, um, I think fairly widely known to be a culture that is excellent for students, and thus we're retaining more students. Our per pupil expenditure has gone up a little bit, mostly because we have fewer students to divide the overall total by. Um, so, uh, for example, last year we were second to last compared to our surrounding communities. Now we're in fourth place because we have fewer students. But, um, we are, uh, still lower, the state average is 14,920. Our per pupil expenditure is 13,494, so it's more than $1,000, lower than the state average and lower than the surrounding communities with whom we, um, you know, one could say we compete for choice students, or students most likely when they choice out would go to a surrounding district. But compared to, um, demographically comparable, uh, districts, Douglas, West Bridgewater, Sutton, Lunenburg, Georgetown, Milis Air, those are all small districts such as ours, we are, um, a little higher than some of those districts in per pupil expenditure. We do have a higher, uh, percent of students who are low income. We have 17.9. This is fiscal year 14, because the state hasn't released fiscal year 15 data yet for this particular indicator. But you can see that Hockington on the far left has 1.9% students, uh, low income, Medfield 2.5, Medway 7.4. And then we have some of our comparable districts, Georgetown has 9%, Hope Dale, um, 11.5, Douglas 15. In Milis, we have 17.9%. So we do have an economically diverse town. Our fixed costs last year, our budget was 13 million, about $821,000. The cost of living across all, uh, personnel adds 151,000 approximately. The steps in the teacher's contract adds 177,000. Teachers, as they gain in experience, they get a step increment, and that is, uh, in our current step schedule, 4%. The lanes, uh, teachers get are for other, other, I should say, other groups, paraprofessionals, custodians also have steps in their contracts. Uh, the lanes are unique to the teachers because they are required to get a master's degree within five, or actually, they can get an extension to get it within 10 years of, of their certification. So with that, they get, um, a lane increase with a master's degree, or a bachelor's plus 15 graduate credits, or masters plus 30 graduate credits. And then when teachers, um, apply for, um, retirement, they get in our contract, they get a little, um, uh, extra. So there's 12,000, about 13,000 that, uh, the upcoming year in those costs. For a 3% increase overall across all personnel, and what is driving more of our increase is the fact that last year we had to reduce, um, 4.2 teachers and make $636,000 worth of cuts last year, trying to maintain, um, personnel, but because of a, a large upswing in our special education out-of-district tuitions, students who had moved into town, or students who needed to go out of district for their educational needs, um, mostly due to mental health issues. So last year we had to use, um, 200,000 extra in school choice and, um, other one-time funds, circuit breaker, 100,000, that's a funding we get from the state for extraordinary special education costs. So in order to, because they were one-time funds, and we use them to retain personnel and programming, those funds are no longer there. So we need to, uh, find a different source of funding. It needs to be added into our operational budget this year, because those one-time funds are no longer available to use. So in order to, we, we knew in speaking with, uh, finance committees, selectmen, and the town administrator, that our increase this year would be close to the, around 4%, 4.5%. We have had to, um, plan for making staff reductions again this year. 3.2 FTEs spread over seven people. So that is, um, again, always done with priorities in mind, um, trying to retain the staff, working with students, and, um, but it is necessary to balance, to come closer to a balanced budget this year. The, uh, we will need, um, overall, about a 4.5% increase this year. It will include those, those reductions, but for example, uh, one of the reductions will be a teacher in grade one, because of low class sizes, we will not need five teachers in grade one. We can still have very good class sizes with, um, four teachers in grade one, and still have a high-quality program. So it may not necessarily be a grade one teacher, it, it, because of, um, other factors, but the position in grade, there will only be four teachers needed in grade one, because our, uh, we only have 74 kindergarten students currently, and going into four classrooms. The, we do have, um, some increases, the software, for example, email, um, Power School, if any of you have middle schoolers, you can log in, and that's our grading and attendance system. All of the software programs that we use to run the district, basically, um, all those contracts have increased. We need 26,000 for that. We also have an increase of about 40,000 in needed contracted services that are for special needs students. But in order to come in closer to the 4.5%, we have been able to identify utilities in which we can cut 56,000 out of heat and electricity. Electricity here do a little bit to the solar, savings from the solar project we put on the middle and high school roof. And heat, overall, we continue to use natural gas rather than oil, emit is low, and luckily oil is currently also low. Overall, over the past few, um, five, six years, we've had almost a 12% decrease in our expenses. Um, it is, as you know, um, a challenge to maintain buildings with, when the budget, we continue to have decreases in the expenses and, um, in personnel, and those are the reductions we had to make last year. Even though our special education trends overall, we've reduced the number, or of students on IEPs, Individual Education Plans for Special Needs, by 13%. So we have fewer students, and I attribute that to the fact that we're doing an excellent job, teachers are doing a phenomenal job, um, meeting the needs of students in regular education by monitoring student progress using, it was AIMS Web at the elementary level, it's now Star Math and Reading, doing frequent assessments and monitoring progress, and then with our reading tutors, math tutor, math specialist, reading specialist, providing support services before an IEP is needed. So that's, that's excellent. As you can see, even though we have this big increase in special education costs for out-of-district tuitions last year, it really just came up to approximately where it had been before. But we have had two years of excellent, um, reduction in costs by bringing students back, and that's what we're currently doing. The, uh, we're making good efforts in identifying students. We believe that a Milis education, this is the best place for all of our students, and if we can possibly do so, we can create small programs for their needs, for their specific needs, and do a better job and more cost-effectively than an out-of-district tuition. So we're currently in the process of trying to, uh, bring students back into Milis. And this is special education trends as a percent of our total special education costs. So you can see that, oh, out-of-district costs, the tuition we pay to private and collaborative schools is a driver, and it is why we have had to make the reductions last year and this year. Our budget that we've proposed at a 4.5% increase does not include these needs. We've identified and worked hard as an administrative team to identify what our needs are in Milis, and these needs will most likely go unmet because the revenue is just not there from the state. Milis, uh, also has local tax revenues, and, um, those are up a little bit, and, uh, there is a chance, the governor's budget, we know what it is, but then the House and the Senate act upon that, and there is a chance that the House and Senate may raise our Chapter 70 funding a little bit. If you, um, are able to contact your representatives, we would appreciate it to, to, um, let them know that these are needs that are going unmet in Milis because of the lack of, of revenue. We each year put forth to town meeting, both in the spring and the fall, some warrants that, um, are extraordinary expenses that we do not have in our budget. There are always three that are considered must funds, our bus leases, we lease, and then at the end of the six-year lease, we own two of them. So that is a set amount for each of the six years of the lease. We, um, request and generally receive a $70,000 computer lease to maintain all the staff laptops, the devices, the, uh, robust technology that we have in Milis for that 21st century learning. And Medicaid, we pay a consultant, uh, to do a very complicated process for Medicaid reimbursement, but it nets the town over $45,000, so it's, um, well worth the $5,000. We did put forth a, a warrant for $30,000 to repair the roof. We do have a couple leaks in the middle school as well, not, nothing like over at Cly Brown. We need a new wheelchair van for transporting. We do our, our own transportation of special needs students, as students again to save on costs rather than contracting it out. Our auditorium, the stage lights are very old, and we, we fear that they'll stop working. The sound and audio board, uh, the whole community uses that auditorium. This, um, it's, it's old, um, and in need of replacement. The middle and high school needs some bathroom upgrades. We, um, requested 62,000 for the curriculum materials, textbooks, and science kits that the science committee has been working hard to identify for, um, students to do something, and set Cly Brown aligned to the new frameworks, and that would be K to 12, 6, 62,000. We need furniture, we're trying to replace the cafeteria tables with fold-up tables for ease of cleaning and also for safety, because, um, with many loose chairs, if we have to evacuate quickly, it, it's not as, as safe, and it could, you know, kids could stumble and trip over chairs. Uh, we are mounting the LCD projectors so that they're not in the middle of the room for the teachers and kids tripping over, over, uh, the cords. for the teachers and kids tripping over, over the cords. And we need athletic equipment also used by the whole community. Some of these things, if, you know, we are able, we may be able to try to, well, we've received some wonderful donations, but also, we may be able to, be able to fund some of these smaller items in, in our budget if, you know, all goes well and heat and everything stays low. But then this carpeting also needs replaced, much like the Clyde Brown. It is, you know, it'll, it'll be fine for another year because the cost that Mr. Conroy referred to for the consultants in the air testing is probably going to be what is the only warrant able to be funded through free cash this year at town meeting. But that is, the Finance Committee will decide. I present to them tomorrow night, Finance Committee and Selectmen. So we're hopeful that there might be some funding for some of these items. So to wrap up, we, this captures what we believe in Milis is very true, that students come to us, many different kinds of students. We get to know them well, we try to meet their individual needs, we personalize our approach to those students. And because of that, I think we have an excellent school district, and the teachers are doing a great job. Thank you. Are there any questions?
No comments.
Yeah, I'll make a couple of comments first on some of the, some of the information. One, as Nancy indicated, with Chapter 70 funding, the, the state, so, because you'll see various things in, in the newspapers, et cetera. The budgets from the state, you'll see, you know, Chapter 70 up five, 5 percent, 4 percent, whatever it is. But as Nancy indicated, the devil for Milis is in the details where the variable cost per student that, that each city and town gets is the, close to $10,000 number. So unfortunately, for Milis with the decline in enrollment, we lose $10,000. Even though the revenue, the total amount would go up, we're losing because we're, we're losing revenue. And if we lost, for example, 30 kids in a year across all 12 grades, that's 300,000, 30,000, 300,000. And there's no way that the cost of the school goes down by that much simply because 30 kids across 12 grades leave. You know, the, the biggest issue with that formula, the way it's constructed, is it assumes, the only way that that would make sense is if you had 30 kids all in one grade, so you could lose a teacher, you could lose a classroom, you could just get rid of all of it, not reality. The state did a, a study, they, they did a commission over last summer to identify some components of the Chapter 70 funding. What they found is in the formula, because going back to when it was updated in 2003, I think, the, one of the, they looked at two elements specifically, the, the amount that's factored in for special education tuition, so out-of-district tuition, and they looked at the health insurance rate increases that were embedded in the Chapter 70 funding. They were nowhere near increased at the rates that are actual reality over the last five years. They actually found that Chapter 70 itself is underfunded just for those two components. It was underfunded by like $7 billion. Now, how that was really for Milis is we get about 1 percent on average of, of, of the state, Chapter 70 money. That's $700,000 that the state's already identified that Milis is short just because of the formula. They didn't build in cost increases that kept up with, with actual, actual work. So that's where we'll see, and if people will see in public, you know, the state's education funding is going up, well, Milis is, is on the downward side of that because of that, that variable cost per student. Talking to the cost per pupil, you know, the $1,500 difference between what we're spending in Milis to what the state average is, is $2 million when you take it across the whole pool. Now, a lot of that is done, in, in large part, it's done because we do things more efficiently. There are elements, you know, we have for good or for, for bad. There are roles and responsibilities that are done either by one person here that two people do in a, in a different district, or one person shares two roles that, that two people would have in another district. That's, that's how we built, that's how this district has been built, and it's how it's maintained. We do, we do a lot with, as, with less. But that's just kind of putting some numbers to it. In respect to the, the reductions that Nancy highlighted and kind of how we're making those work, a lot of, a lot of what we outlined in that number, the $230,000 number, are things that, as Nancy mentioned, it, you know, the kind of reorganizations that happen, that are going to happen because, because of the realities of, of the population in Milis or the services that we need to provide. So, you know, the low enrollment, you know, instead of having a class size of 16, I think it's going to be 20 in that first grade, that's what it means. Things that probably should have, would happen anyway regardless of our funding source. What it does translate into though, is instead of being able to make those reorganization adjustments of 230,000 and turn around and say, well, of this list of $460,000 in things that we actually need to, to add into the district, it'd be nice if we could have made those, those efficiency reductions and then turned around and replaced it with, with some of the list that we have of things we would like to add or need to provide. We're not able to do that because the revenue that we're getting just doesn't cover. So, you know, it's, that, that's really the, the situation that we're, why we see some of those things that, you know, the ideal scenario with those 230,000 wouldn't have been to not do them necessarily. It would have been to probably do them but replace them with something else. And unfortunately, we're not going to be able to do that this year. Does the committee have any other questions, comments? Yeah?
Jessica Bush made remarks in Clyde Brown. I just want to make sure I understood correctly. So for the next year's budget, there's still nothing in there in terms of, you know, repairing the Clyde Brown roof?
So there's, to do, to, within our maintenance budget, if there are things to do the repairs and through, we have a revolving account, a facility revolving account. This day-to-day, you know, maintenance and weekly maintenance, whatever it's going to be, of replacing ceiling tiles and, and all of the stuff that we discussed earlier, we will manage that through the existing budget that we have. There, we, we couldn't build a roof replacement or any major amount into our operating budget. The, the money's just not there. And if we were to do that, it would mean beyond drastic cost to, to headcount and, and being able to, to function and, and run the school system that we have. The only way that we would be able to accomplish something like a roof replacement would be through a debt exclusion that would have to go through town meeting as a separate warrant article and an override vote.
So how would you go about doing that, or how would us townspeople go about doing that? You know, so the children at Clyde Brown for the next three, four years aren't dealing with leaky roofs and tarps?
So, we as a, we as a committee could propose it, which we have elected not to do. There is a formal process called a citizen petition where, where you can gather and, I think it means 10 signatures, to put an override on a ballot. Again, it wouldn't, from a timing perspective, from a deadline perspective, it can't be done for, for May. The earliest it would be able to be done would be November. And you would present it to, well, if you got the 10 signatures and it was a citizen petition, you would go before the board of selectmen, who are responsible for putting articles on the warrant and putting an override votes on the, the election ballot. You would go before them, make the presentation, they would put it on the ballot. As a citizen petition, I don't believe that they have much ability to say no. And then, you would then need to run an override campaign and get, for a debt exclusion, a 50 percent vote at a, at a special elect or a town election, and then a two-thirds vote at a subsequent town meeting to do that.
And why would the conditions at Clyde Brown being as they are, would you, as the school committee, not have made that choice to put it on the ballot?
We made the decision because of the timing of when the, when the school building override will, will need to happen. And the, the idea of asking the town residents to, to pay for a million-dollar roof renovation, if it's even still a million dollars. We're, we're getting the estimates so that we know what the cost can be. But to do that, and then a year from now, ask for a substantially larger override to, to either completely renovate or take that building down after we just put a million dollars into it, we don't, we chose not to ask, to go to the taxpayers and ask for people to pay twice for that.
Okay, but in the meantime, it's the children and the amazing staff at Clyde Brown that are suffering consequences.
Mr. Chair? I think there's a political element that, that goes into this decision-making. We've, a lot of us, us have been on boards for a while, and we've been in a lot of town meetings, and we see things that pass and things that don't pass. And if we went before the town in November and asked, because that's the next time we could, and asked for a million-dollar override for a roof, and then in January, February, asked for a substantially larger amount to maybe even replace the entire school, the likelihood of that passing, just in all honesty, it's very unlikely that million-dollar could pass. So, that's just, that's just, we, we sort of have lived a lot of the politics, and we have to weigh that as well. We also don't want to somehow do something that prevents either a new school or a complete renovation from happening. So those are things that we're trying to weigh, and not everybody's going to agree with our decision-making. But we factor, we want a beautiful school over there for the children and for the teachers. We have kids there, we adore the teachers, we want all of those things. But these are some of the factors that we have to weigh.
Well, and I can understand that, you know, a beautiful new school building would definitely be optimal, but there are children there and that are trying to learn now.
Mr. Chair? We are ignoring the issues over at the Clyde Brown School. We're actively trying to repair the roof. It has been an ongoing process for multiple years. There've been leaks in that roof that have traveled, some that have been addressed, some that we keep trying to fix, some that get partially addressed. It's ongoing, so it's not going to stop after, we have three estimates. If we solve leaks and new ones happen, then we'll have roofers back to fix the new leaks. Our estimation is that the repairs to the roof and the cost of those won't come close to what a full roof replacement would be. So from a fiscal perspective, it seems to be the more prudent approach for us to take right now. As, as Mark said, we are still getting those estimates from three different roofing companies to see what a full roof replacement would be cost-wise, and then what their opinions are as far as the repairs that are needed, not just over room five and that wing, but across the whole roof. So we are trying to fix the problem and not just stick a Band-Aid on it for a week and then see what the next issue is that pops up. We're trying to solve as much of it as we possibly can. And we're going to continue to bring parties to the table that can help us with that.
A couple of questions about school choice. So the numbers you had were from the last school year, is that correct?
The school choice amount?
It's kids going out of district and kids coming into district. We have more kids coming in right now.
Yeah, up through this, up through what we have as of now for this year.
For this year.
This school.
Right, so how, when will we get numbers for, I guess, the next school year?
They're not final, so it's open.
It's, it's ongoing, so it gets updated. There's an October 1 submission that the state, we submit to the state, and they give us preliminary estimates of what our costs will be. But what happens is we, throughout the year, we, families maybe move out of town, but the kids, they want to continue enrolled here, so they become choice students. Even, they lived in Milis, but they moved out of town, they continue enrolled here. And so we get partial funding if that happens in January. So it's a, a rolling process, and we do, if you're interested in the, in our budget books, have a projection. Generally, we get about $375,000 in revenue, between that and $400,000 in revenue each year. It might go up or down a little bit each, each year.
What's the breakdown between the high school and middle school compared to Clyde Brown?
I can tell you that in one minute.
Yes, the thing I'm thinking is, if, if parents are really worried about the school so much, are we thinking that a lot of parents might be considering school choice now? The elementary school until the new school is built, are you guys thinking about that projecting in the budget? The kids might be leaving now?
We do, we don't have really any room at the high school level for school choice because we have class sizes there much, much greater. So currently, at the high school, we have 16 or 12, 28 students. At the middle school, we have 29 choice students, and at the Clyde Brown, up through grade four, 18. And because of our low class sizes at Clyde Brown, that is where we have room for choice students.
The kids opting, the kids leaving the district, where are those kids coming from? The elementary school, middle school, high school?
Outgoing, we have 13 at the high school level. We have nine at the middle school level, and two, four, six, seven at the elementary level.
You don't have the numbers yet for the next school year?
No, it varies. The, the state kind of does, snaps the line and says, give us your first admission in September. But Nancy said, it could happen, I mean, people move at any given time, and you can decide. Or you can decide, you know, next, next year, I'm going to choose a student in or out for a variety of reasons.
Yeah. What is the cost per student?
5,000, if there are special needs. There is an increase, an incremental increase in the, in the amount that the sending district pays us for those special needs services. But 5,000 is funding from the state.
So you guys will know in the fall if there's a significant amount of students that opt out of Clyde Brown?
Yeah, I mean, we would probably know sooner than the following, without having this, because data, information would have to be, most have to be communicated, transferred to the schools. We'd know if, if over the course of the next, the rest of this school year, we all of a sudden were hearing that.
Something I'd consider. Something I'm considering, just to be honest.
We would probably find out if there was massive outflows being, being done.
Is an annual election in Milis meant to be part of it?
Yes, it's to be part of school choice, yeah.
So, with the new school, you guys, thinking about opting out, would you stay and have more students come into the district if we were to get the new school?
We, we would, it would depend on class size, we, we have the room and so we've always brought kids in. Even participating in it, you can set limits on, on different grades, you know, I think what we have available, obviously in the high school is little to none, but in the elementary school, we do have plenty of room, but I believe, unless something drastically changes with, with space and availability, I doubt that we would opt for how this school chose.
Does it increase funding for the amount of students coming in too?
Correct.
If you were to opt in this school choice and they only had for elementary students, so if I were to go to the halls, for example, and my son were to go to their elementary school, but they only do the elementary school, does that mean once he gets to middle school, you have to leave the school system?
No, I believe, once you're in, once you're choice in, your grandpa, your grandfather, you're there until you decide to leave.
Okay. All right. Please.
March enrollment has, we have two fewer students than the previous month, but two more choice students. So, we have seventy-five total choice students and our enrollment is 1,385. The good news is that we have two fewer students going out of district to collaborative places as well.
Next is subcommittee reports, school building.
We have a important group meeting tomorrow for the Elementary School Building Committee. We are having a community forum on February 3rd, April 14th, April 14th, and we're hoping, we're hoping that we get feedback from the state back on our DPP so we can start to refine the next submission. We actually had the meeting, it canceled last week because we had not seen feedback. It's still running, so I'm assuming we have the feedback and it's, going to be a long meeting tomorrow to kind of start going through what the state is coming back with and how to refine that next proposal.
Next, the subcommittee. Nothing in the course of Congress?
No.
All right. School committee announcements, Jeff?
No.
Jeff?
No.
Okay. I think for all the new business, we're now going to executive session.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Colonel, make a motion to a chair.
Second.
From the executive, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you all very much. Thank you.